Mrs. Sue Miller?
Here.
Mrs. Mary Miller?
Here.
Mr. Fisher?
Here.
Mrs. Dale Hoffman?
Here.
Mr. Hanson?
Here.
I feel we hold in silence, please. Mr. Leiser, would you please read us in the pledge? Stick your hands up if you have any on. Please, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We've got some seats up front, guys. You're going late, you guys sit up front. Just like church, baby. Mr. Smazel, are you up here for the public notice?
Yes.
The agenda, do you have any corrections or deletions to this agenda?
I need to approve.
Second.
Mary and Sue, who's second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Agenda's passed. Onto, uh, item seven, the public comments section, we do have, uh, one person. Mr. Price? Yes. Um, my-
We do have a place for you up front.
Wow, look at that. Probably even take a chair with masks. Uh, this is one taken with him. Uh, my name's Ricky Price, uh, I'm a Kiwaskum Upstate alumni, uh, student, pastor. Uh, my question is for you guys, if I could get your approval, because we're doing a- try and raise money, and we were- we started a tractor and stuff, and on the tickets, and it's hopefully is going to come down the line, we want to see a future greenhouse, and we started this two years ago, and, uh, some of you guys are on the board, and Mr. Beaver proposed that project, and then he kind of went away and it kind of fell behind. So, we started a savings fund two years ago, so we got some money in there, but we want to raise on and pursue this, and hopefully, within six months through the year, that we can have fifteen, eighty, a hundred thousand dollars in there, that we can come back and say, hey, you know, cost of task here is money, we got the money here. So, I guess, approval, uh, can we do that, or not, or?
Your answer today?
Sir, one of the concerns that Mr. brought up was, where are we going to put it? That was the biggest building concern.
Yeah, yeah. We have two of them, yeah.
So, we, I don't think the board is against it, it's just a question of, where does it accommodate our facilities? I think that's the biggest question. So, in your grand scheme of things, where do you raise, what to put?
Well, and that's the thing we gotta talk about, and I know, we had a good egg advisor, now Mrs. Dale Hoffman, and, we've been talking about this, I know she's got some proposals, and hopefully getting the board next month, hopefully, and we got some different ideas, and, I mean, it's up to you, I mean, there's a couple, we can do it in front of school, back to school, or do it all separate between the high school and the middle school. I mean, what I'm- I just want to do is, I want to just, not saying it's going to go towards a greenhouse, but future. I mean, so, there's a lot of, this is a small community, and that community's egg-related, and I know we can get a lot of money raised in this thing, so, and the other thing is coming up, and with the benefit of Brent Schultz and Kevin Lindtholm, they want to do the same thing on their posters, they want to donate all that money to the greenhouse, too. That's coming up on me six.
So, just for clarification, um, we gotta be very careful that we don't put too much discussion in the topic that wasn't on the agenda. So, since it's not on the agenda, you can, we can, we can move forward in two ways. One, we can put it on the agenda for the December board meeting, and have them take an official vote on it.
Right.
Or, we can say, um, without having to do that, that you doing a fundraiser and putting future expansion of the FFA program, which might include a greenhouse, you can do that without board approval.
Do you think if this one, do that, it would be better for you? Because then you go ahead and expand it on the agenda.
Okay.
We're not, we're not against it, don't get it wrong.
Well, no, and I just don't want to go ahead and make the tickets, because I know, like, last year when we had, uh, Mr. A, when we did a funds, for fundraising, and he just went ahead and said, towards greenhouses, we got a little trouble phone, a couple people called, he can't mean that, so I want permission before I start making up tickets and posters and stuff, so. And if that's just the way, and I think that's just all it is, is clarification for word, you know, I'm not saying it's wonderful, but hopefully, future.
I think your superintendent is okay with it.
Yeah, I think if you put, you know, this is going towards, uh, future expansion of all the FFA programs up to, including a greenhouse, you certainly can do that, and I, all more power to you. I would say that you could do that.
Okay. That's all I have?
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a cluster of recognition. These three.
So, before we go on what's in front of you, we do have a special guest here tonight, they're all special guests here, but one more particular than another, and that is, Ann Farrenholz is with us tonight, and Marcus is going to introduce her.
Yeah, uh, so this is the new curriculum secretary for Kiwaskum School District, so just wanted to introduce you, if you've got anything that you need from dealing with curriculum assessment or instruction, um, she's our new person, so anyways.
So, yes, we're-
Based with the name.
Yeah, based with the name, and, and, uh, started last week, and, um, we're very happy to have her with us. And I would also say that, um, we've moved here to the district office, and we put four rows of chairs in, and thank goodness we did. And it looks like the, the high school classes have now reintroduced that you have to come to a board meeting, and/or some type of a civic meeting, is that correct?
Yeah.
And so, you, you guys are here for, for class, is this Mr. Tewani's class?
Yeah.
And Ross's.
And Mr. Ross's class? All right, well, welcome. And I would, um, I would offer that if you ever have any questions, or would like further for clarification on this, that myself and/or I would suspect that almost any one of the board members with a little bit of notice would be more than happy to, uh, come in and address your class. So, we offer that up to you. Okay? And our fee is really minimal, almost to be wanting around. Anyway, um, so, the recognition that we have in front of us, and this is, this is a brainchild from the board, more specifically, Mr. Hanson, who asked that we, uh, do a little bit better job, if you will, on the recognition and the public relations that we have going on in our district. So, this is our, um, first, or, uh, most in-depth staff, staff at doing this correctly for you, so in front of you, board members, you have all kinds of stuff, and we sent something in the mail, excuse me, um, in the board package, whether it's email or in the mail, about some other things that were going on, and some highlights of positive things. So, um, I'm just gonna go over these things as quickly as I possibly can, and then at the end, if you have any questions, you certainly, you know, feel free to ask. So, recognition, we have the manufacturing, KHS Manufacturing was recognized in a newsletter called Cerfs of Steel, and you can go on the website, and you can find that, we don't, we weren't able to print it off, but you can go and look at it. Uh, Boya Grant is one of, we, KMS was one of sixty schools nationwide to receive a Boya Grant, and we, if you want to know more about it, uh, we made a copy of it in your packet for you. Peer Mentor Grant is, this is the second year we've been doing this, and we partnered with Campbell's Port, and we split the twenty-five thousand dollars, and you can see that it's used for mentor, mentoring teachers and supporting the teachers. Feel Up to Play Sixty, once again, if you go onto the feeluptoplaysixty.com website, you can see, um, a forty-five second video of one of our student advanced, uh, ambassadors, Courtney, I, I'm struggling with her last name, but Courtney is our student that did that, um, and it's awesome, she did the, there, they did this all across the United States and had them do these, and Courtney's, I feel, is the best. The Farm to School Program, you have an update in your packet of information, and you can see that there's about a half a dozen to a dozen things that we're doing, and you can read through those, it specifically talks about the school garden, some of the art classes, and the things going on with Pidley Ridley, and the, uh, the Festival of the Month, the boss group, which is the best food force, uh, best for you food force, so, all kinds of great things going on with Feel Up to Play Sixty, and then the Farm to School Program. We had thirteen all-conference football selections, those are on your, um, in your packet, and we also had, that includes football, volleyball, boys soccer, and girls tennis, so we gave you a list of all those kids that, um, not only in football, but also in volleyball, boys soccer, and tennis. Nine new NHS members, and thanks to Troy and Mary for coming to the ceremony, which took place last week, and I promise not to try to butcher these names too bad. Is it Alyssa Delavec, is that how you say Alyssa's, Alyssa? Delavec, Lindsay? Dusharm?
Dusharm.
Dusharm. Emily Creer? Alexandra Krieger? Megan Luthke? Kay Monte? Michael Prochnow? And Serena Better? And Lauren Holt? So, congratulations to them. In the public relations area, tomorrow at ten forty at the high school, there's a Veterans Day Assembly. I'd also like to mention that I do have the shirt on from the celebration for the fifty year out at Wayne today, and Mrs. Dale Hoffman is fresh off of planting almost five hundred tulips out there today, and we had Copper Box come and present a musical lesson to the kids about working hard and staying true to what you want to do with your lives. It was a great presentation, um, and I think they might have even did a little bit of videotaping of people polka dancing. I stayed out of that for obvious reasons, um, so, that was really, really good to see, it was a great day today at, uh, Wayne. The musical's coming up, uh, very shortly here, um, this weekend, and you can see the information on that, so that's on Friday and Saturday. Uh, Key Club, Senior Citizen Thanksgiving Dinner is coming up on November fifteenth, that's Saturday, from eleven to twelve-thirty. KHS Band and Choir Concert on next Monday night at seven o'clock. Financial Aid Presentation is on November twentieth. Child Find Screening is on November twenty-first, from eight to noon, um, you can look and see what that's all about. Christmas concerts are coming up, right around the corner, starting with the Keys Christmas Concert on December fir- first, and it's the fortieth annual, to raise money for scholarships, forty years, that's unbelievable. And then you have the Wayne Christmas Concert is on December fourth at two and six P M. Also, we have Breakfast with Santa on December sixth. We have the Manufacturing Craft Show is on December sixth as well, um, at the same time that they're doing Santa. And then the KMS Band Concert is on December eighth at seven o'clock, seven o'clock, and note that it has to be in the fieldhouse because we have so many kids in band that they don't fit in the auditorium, so we have to do that in the fieldhouse. And then, the last thing is, is I'll, uh, Mark would like to just talk a little bit about the manufacturing site visits that we did with the staff.
Yeah, I'll, actually, I'll talk a little bit when I do, when I do my updates.
Okay.
That's all right with you, Mr. Smazel?
Very good. I can say that, uh, I did attend a meeting for the, the County Workforce Alliance, and that it was a resounding, positive, valuable experience for not only Kiwaskum, but for Slinger, and Hartford, and West Bend, so it's a great, great initiative that's being done district wa- excuse me, countywide, um, for the most part, German County is part of the county, uh, but they are on the southern end, on the northern end, the four school districts on this end have partnered together, and it's been a great initiative, and it's wonderful to see that the school districts working together on such a positive thing with our manufacturing sites. Any questions?
No, I would, I would say, if you, you mentioned that little kids in the work, uh, the Breakfast with Santa, the, the KHS Manufacturing, the privilege boards, the metal, the pieces of, I'm, I'm calling them artwork, we bought several, a couple weeks ago, and they had an open house, um, great Christmas gifts, and really beautiful pieces, really well-done stuff from our, our class, and I, I saw, I saw on Snapchat, it sounds like they, they show the shelf, the shelves are stocked, they're ready to go for the holiday seasons, so, yeah, a lot of great stuff, I'm, I'm excited about what's really going on around here, there's so many positive things across the board, academics, athletics, grants, uh, fiftieth anniversaries, it's, we need to celebrate those things, so, thanks for going through that laundry list. Hopefully, it's laundry next week, or next month, why not? Anyway, all right, we're on to the consent agenda. Take a look at that and see if you had any, um, comments or questions on that.
Second.
This is Elhitin and Mary Miller, just in second. Any discussion?
One discussion point, Mr. Leiser brought up at the last meeting, to see if we had to do it by roll call, or if we could do it by voice, if it had anything pertaining to do with, uh, some resident needs and/or hirings, because there's a financial part of that, and checking with legal counsel, it is okay to do a voice vote on these.
So, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Now, we're to Mr. - was that also known as the PowerPoint man?
Yeah, I know, I just love pictures. So, I got some, I got some cool ones on here. Um, so, yeah, so just, uh, quickly, a couple of updates on, on a few different things, um, and, uh, one of them's gonna be, I've got some, I've got some pictures from the, uh, from the, uh, the PD that we had in October twenty-four, too, and, um, I've got a little bit of results from some of the surveys that we did with the teachers as well, so just gonna get through that. First of all, just a little update for the literacy project, one of the things that you'll probably notice, um, when you go into classrooms, um, is that, um, you have students who are doing things called, um, either Word Center, or sometimes it's called Word Study, or Words Their Way, um, this is sort of, uh, and you'll probably see your parents, um, students coming home with slips of paper that they're sorting, um, and we've been doing this for the last few years now, and, uh, the, the philosophy behind it is moving away from, uh, a traditional spelling program, where, where students only memorize a certain set of words, to moving more towards a, a better understanding about how words are spelled, uh, including looking for patterns. So, uh, so, for example, they might see the A-T-I-O-N at the end of a word, and so, um, when they think about the word connect, they think about the word connection, and they think about how do you use the word connect, and how do you use the word connection, what does the A-T-I-O-N ending do to a word when I add it to it, and then, um, teaching them strategies about how to spell, as opposed to just memorizing specific, um, specific words on a list, so, you'll see that, uh, when you go to the classrooms, especially during their ELA block, uh, students working on that. Uh, math, uh, one of the cool things that, um, our, our new math program, um, really focuses on is the idea of math talk, and what math talk has to do with is, again, moving beyond just simply memorizing things, but rather a better understanding about why things are the way they are, and then having discussions, um, with other students about it, too. So, you'll see things like, on this, this is just a, uh, a bookmark that they put into their math book, uh, I want to say this was fourth grade, I saw this, but there's math stems like, I agree with, because, or I disagree with this, because, this is a good answer, because, so it's not all just about the answer itself, but it's about explaining it, and, and making sure that students actually understand why they got to that particular answer. So, and then having those really deep, rich conversations with other students about math conversations and math dialogues. Uh, so, the KCA had an open house, uh, so, uh, this is a, this is a shot of, uh, the, the greenhouse, we had a student who actually gave us a, a quick tour of the, um, the hydroponics that they have there, the aquaponics that they have there, and, uh, in this case, I want to say those are peppers, is that right? Yeah. Those of you guys who are gardeners probably recognize a little bit, yeah, that's right, Mr. Fisher was on that tour with me as well, so, very cool, it was great to hear from, from all the students, both, uh, the past and the present students at the KCA, uh, and how the KCA is helping them meet their objectives, um, both, um, in, uh, post-secondary and secondary education as well. Educator Effectiveness, so, um, one of the things that they're just skeletoning, uh, yes, and deep thought, deep thought about how can we give meaningful feedback to, uh, to, to teachers, but, uh, she really didn't want me to use this picture, so. So, one of the things that we do with Educator Effectiveness, the new, um, evaluation program for teachers, is, uh, twice a year, each semester, we do what we call a recalibration, where we get together with the other administrators, and, uh, we take a look at a, uh, some sort of, uh, like a recorded lesson, and then we talk about what are some of the things that we see in it, um, how would we give, uh, feedback to that teacher, so that was meaningful for their, um, for their growth, uh, as an educator, and so, we do that twice a year, and what that does is it helps us with our validity and our reliability with our, um, teacher evaluation program that we have, so we'll be doing that in the next month or so, um, with the admin team, but we do that twice a year. Uh, and then finally, the last thing is, the partnership with the Washington, um, County Workforce Alliance, again, those were the, the people that we had partnered with, um, and beforehand, uh, here's Mr. Smazel, uh, at the front, kind of addressing everybody, and, uh, again, just a, a, a big thank you to Mr. Smazel, he was really the workforce behind this entire day, he, he did pretty much all the work when it came to setting it up, organizing it, partnering it with all the people, so, thank you very much, uh, Mr. Smazel, and, um, it was, it was a fantastic day, uh, there was a lot of really great things that came out of it, we did a, there, there was a pre and a post survey done with teachers about their perceptions about the manufacturing, uh, industry, and so, after taking a look at the data from the pre and the post survey, and just doing a little bit of, um, some comparative data, uh, analyzing those two, um, there was a couple of things that came out, here's a picture of one of the buses in front of Triton, uh, the manufacturer of Triton trailers, so, yeah, everybody's really happy, as you can see. Uh, so, some of the things that came out of it, uh, looking at the two, uh, the two different surveys, is that, uh, in general, uh, teachers' perceptions of manufacturing changed to the point that they felt like, uh, that manufacturing was safer than they had expected, uh, that manufacturing facilities, uh, actually offer more advancement opportunities than they thought that they did, uh, that more training was available for employees when they go into manufacturing, uh, which of course, kind of deals with that advancement opportunities as well. Uh, the jobs were more, uh, stable than they had thought, and of course, the idea that there's actually a lot more, not only right now is there opportunities in manufacturing, but also in the future, that there's going to be a, a big demand, in the state, but also just even our local communities, that there's going to be a big demand for, uh, manufacturing jobs, so. So, a lot of really positive things came out of, um, that professional development day, um, really kind of gave us an idea of what, what are the skills that manufacturers are looking for, what it means to be career-ready, uh, and again, these are a lot of the skills that, that, that we do focus on in education, accountability, critical thinking, uh, being able to read complex documents, uh, informational documents like blueprints and graphs, uh, and then those problem, problem-solving skills, especially with, with mathematics, those were all a lot of the skills that count coming up over and over again, so, that was really kind of cool to see, that it, it really reinforces what, what we mean as a district to be college and career-ready, so. That's it? Questions? I know.
I'm glad we're doing that, because I still, the biggest complaint I hear from my clients is, we can't get workers.
Yeah.
We can't get good workers, we can't get trained workers.
Yeah.
It's the same thing, sounds familiar, Jay?
So, I think this helps with that perception, and that perception, I think, translates into the conversations that they have with students, and the teaching that goes on in the classroom, just being aware of that, um, yeah. We've already had some really good conversations, even at the elementary level, about how do we report to, to work habits to parents, so we're kind of having that discussion now, what does that look like on the report card, so, you might see some changes in relation directly to some of the work that, that happened on that day, and really what manufacturers and, and, you know, beyond manufacturing, what people are looking for in the workforce.
Is that directive called work, is it for whatever work?
Just a thought, just a marketing option.
There you go, I like it, I like the big choice.
So, the second step, this is the first step in the process, so the second step in the process is to have the manufacturers actually come and visit our school district, so on December, December seventeenth, from about approximately ten until two P M, the manufacturers from these sites, um, will be coming to Kiwaskum and doing a tour of our facilities, so that's something that we have to look forward to, um, them coming to see us on the seventeenth. Prior to that, they're gonna go see Hartford, Slinger, and West Bend, so they're gonna go see all four of the different, um, high schools and school districts, it will not just be the high school, it will be other parts of our, um, campus district. And then the third, uh, the third, uh, part of this is to actually get the students out to these manufacturing sites, to do field trips out to different places. The fourth piece, and the one that's a, a little bit of an intangible, is, is we'd love to start organizing it for the parents, we'd love to have a parent field trip, um, and the businesses, the manufacturers, would love to have the parents come out and do a manufacturing field trip for parents, obviously, their kids can come along with them, you know, make sure that they don't be lost. But, that would be the fourth step, one that we don't have as much control over, obviously, and then the fifth step, I believe it is, uh, scheduled for March nineteenth, twentieth, right in that area, um, we are going to do a countywide college and career fair at the County Fair Park, and that will be huge, and all our juniors and potentially seniors will be able to attend that.
And that, that is something, please, we encourage, parents get out to see that, you know, if that's where, if you can't make it to the, their site, they will be here, you know, some of these presentations, it's not quite like being there, but you might get a lot of great information, so, and, students who are here, encourage your parents to come for that college and career fair, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Excellent, thank you, Mark. Old business, looking at dates for the January and July, uh, School Board Leadership Retreat, um, do you want to address that? Is there any more depth than that, or just?
I think it's self-explanatory, we've talked about it before, this is the timeline we'd like to use, and just, uh, reiterate that in July, the reason that we flipped the two, the July thirteenth is the second Monday, that would normally be the board meeting, we'd like to do the retreat that day, so then you can hear about the things budgetarily and why it's what we're talking about, so then we could have the board meeting on the twentieth, um, so you'd be much more prepared to then, um, take a look at the budget materials and, and do whatever approvals that you need to do. That's, it's upcoming year, correct?
Yeah.
The fifth is like a month, yeah, two months from now.
But that's a-
That's a new one.
Right, but that's gonna be at our district office.
Right now, it's at district office.
So, any questions, comments, conflicts? Okay. That's that. Onto, new business. Mr. Fisher?
Yeah, I'd like to move to approve, October payroll, one million, two hundred and fifty-five thousand, two hundred and seventy-four dollars and twenty percent.
Second that. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Sorry, roll call.
Mr. Leiser?
Yes.
Mrs. Sue Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Mary Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Dale Hoffman?
Yes.
And Mr. Hanson?
Yes.
Council table, Mr. Fisher?
Like to move to approve, uh, council table, uh, for five hundred and fifty thousand, five hundred and eighty-one dollars and twenty-five cents.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Mrs. Sue Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Mary Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Dale Hoffman?
Yes.
Mr. Leiser?
Yes.
And Mr. Hanson?
Yes.
Onto item thirteen C, Mr. Loss.
Good evening. I want to spend a little bit of time here this, uh, this evening with you talking about, uh, some scheduling options, we've been discussing high school, and I kind of do it to some of this back in the summer, we had a retreat, um, we talked about the fact we'd be coming forward at a later time to give you more concrete, uh, information, and so, that's the purpose for my presence here tonight, is just to talk a little about the schedule, the study process that we've done as a faculty over the course of the last year, and also answering the questions that you might have about the process that we've gone through thus far, as well as the trimester scheduling, so that's the intent here this evening. Um, just kind of some background and contextual, you know, information with regards to why we're even talking about this right now. Um, I sat in this very room, uh, back in, in, uh, May of two thousand and thirteen when I was hired, uh, and there were some students who were here at the time to express concern about the change that took place going from a block schedule to the seventh period day, and they just experienced that, that change to a seventh period day, in which they went from having four classes at any given time to seven classes without study halls and the like, and they talked about the stress that was associated with that. That conversation then continued along with faculty, uh, during the summer of, of, uh, two thousand and thirteen, in which we talked, uh, with staff about their perceptions of the seventh period day, and how that was impacting students, um, and so, we had some conversation about, uh, the impact that students had with stress to their schedule, uh, with concern with all of the limited access to courses, because from going from an eight-period day to a four, or seven-period day, they were reduced to twenty credits over the course of their academic career, um, and obviously, that puts our students here in Kiwaskum at a competitive disadvantage compared to students in other districts, who would have eight-credit opportunities throughout the course of their high school career, a chance to earn thirty-two credits, so in essence, our students are a semester behind students who aren't any credit opportunity with other districts. So, we had some conversations about that, uh, and, and want to take a look as far as what can we do to try to, to increase the opportunities that are available for the students at Kiwaskum High School. Throughout that whole process, one of the things that we discussed, if we were gonna make a change, is number one, it needs to be cost-neutral, we understand the implication, implications that exist, and the restrictions we have in our budget right now, and so, any schedule change that we might make needs to be, uh, kept at cost-neutral, we want to make sure that we provide students greater access to courses than what they currently have, including advanced coursework, uh, to ensure that every student's college and career-ready, we also want to make sure we can provide timely remediation, and also, again, to get- We also want to make sure we can provide timely remediation and also, again, to better depth of study and maximize instructional time. So, those were kind of the tenants that we operated under as we're going through this process. And there are various schedules that we considered and looked at, just to kind of give a sense. And this is not an all-inclusive list, but it gives you an idea. We looked at our current seven-period day. We looked at an eight-period day. We looked at various options of block scheduling that have been used or have not been used here in the past, blocks with skinnies, hybrids. The Forest High School has a three-by-five model that we took off that and actually gave some very serious consideration to. And we also looked at the trimester. And throughout that conversation, we tried to keep in mind, okay, what can we do to make sure we maximize those pentacles tenants that exist, along with the cost-neutral perspective? To understand where we're at right now, I think it's pretty clear. It's a seven-period day. We have, have seven periods of fifteen minutes each, so three hundred and fifty minutes of instructional time throughout the course of the school day. And there's some definite pros and cons associated with that. You know, the pro in this case is that, you know, we're seven credits available for our students, provides daily practice, can pick the courses that are long, meet on a daily basis from day one till the end of the school year. Semesterized classes meet every day for approximately eighteen weeks. So, there's, there's a sense of continuity as far as that goes. It's also a very economical schedule from the standpoint of, of staffing and costs along with that. In terms of some, some drawbacks to it, you know, there's extra class changes that take place. And we have students that are moving about the building seven times throughout the course of the day. They're carrying seven classes at a time. Only twenty credit opportunities available to our students over the course of four years. And it also means that our staff in the process of going through presents his class presentations throughout the course of the day as well. So, some pros and cons to that. And the trimester is the one that, that the faculty has landed upon. I want to emphasize that this is something that, again, has been a conversation over the course of last year. But it's really been a faculty-driven conversation, a faculty-driven desire. It's certainly not something that I've been like, well, let's go and make this change. But we've taken a look at various options that exist. The trimester's a little bit different from the standpoint that students would be enrolled in only five classes at any given time, and the year would be broken up into thirds. So, those, those twelve-week trimesters, so to speak, would result in students taking five classes at a time, and class periods would be approximately seventy minutes in length. So, we still have that seven, or three hundred and fifty minutes of instruction taking place, as you can see, throughout the course of, of the school day. But again, the student responsibility now is, is reduced down to a load of five classes at a time as opposed to seven. So, we think that that addresses that particular issue in terms of stress associated with student schedules. In terms of pros, obviously, the fewer subjects at any given time. It provides some acceleration and remediation opportunities, which I'll look to here shortly. And we'll show you an example of the student's schedule in terms of what it could look like. The initial student reaction, and we haven't spent a lot of time talking about this with students, but we have formally, you know, talked to a couple of the classes about it, is, you know, they like the idea of having four classes. They express their concerns about the stress associated with those seven classes. And, and certainly, the opportunity to take additional courses of interest is something that currently does not exist for them. Seven and a half credits per year as opposed to seven. So, again, we're trying to get that idea of being able to provide students additional credit opportunities above and beyond what they have right now. This would get us back to thirty credits of opportunities for students over the course of their four-year academic career. Fewer daily transitions, again, only transitioning between five classes as opposed to seven. And we have classes that are longer in duration, which provides a greater depth of study. So, we're not talking about classes where we feel like we're in track mode right now, or we get the minutes where more staff start a class, they get into it, and then we got to start wrapping up before that bell rings. But it's also not too long from the standpoint that we're going for ninety-five minutes, as was the case in the block. So, this seems to be a happy medium with regards to that. There are some cons, as the case with every schedule. There's gaps in classes that could exist potentially from trimester one to trimester three. Classes that are currently one-credit in length, or meet the entire year right now, would meet for two of the three trimesters. Classes that are one semester in length right now, or half-credit, would meet for one trimester. So theoretically, it's possible that you could have scheduling situations develop where you could have a class for the first half of the class would meet trimester one, and the second half would meet trimester two. You could also have a trimester two start and finish in trimester three. But you could also have the, the extreme where you could have a class start in trimester one and then not resume again until trimester three. So, that gap does potentially exist. But I'll show you some data along the lines of that here in a little bit to hopefully address some questions there. There's two class changes that take place in a given year. So, instead of moving from class to class at semester, we have classes transition twice from first to second trimester and second to third trimester. And then there's also the possibility, depending upon the area that we're talking about, where class sizes may increase. We would expect to see this more so in elective areas than the core areas. I don't really anticipate a whole lot of students who are currently taking four credits in English, and you guys can attest to this, taking more than four credits in English. It's entirely possible. They could do that on their own accord. But I don't see our student body flocking to take an extra, you know, half the full-credit in English class. What I do see is opportunities for them to expand on courses and areas that they're currently going to have access to because of limited, you know, time within their current schedule. Okay? All right. So, just so that, to show that we're not flying out on a limb by ourselves here and kind of going down uncharted territory, there's a number of schools, and you can see that a lot of this is recent. Westapure is probably the most prominent school in the state with regards to the duration of, of use of the trimester schedule at night now for going on to their twelfth year. But more recently here, in the last couple, three years, there's a number of schools that have kind of jumped on board. Some of them locally, McQuan-Holstead of Norris-Burling, which is going to be part of our new athletic conference center next year. Just recently adopted it. Kekana moved towards it this year. Adam Friendship has moved towards it this year. And currently, Wisconsin Rapids is in the process of moving towards it next school year. They just recently had approval from their school board to move in that direction, starting with the next school year. So, it is starting to grow in popularity for some of the reasons I alluded to before. It's economical. It doesn't cost more than the current seven-period day. And it provides opportunities for our students that we're also trying to provide to them here as well. Just some quick facts about the trimester itself. It's a seven-and-a-half-credit schedule format, five classes at any given time for about seventy minutes. Classes would change approximately every twelve weeks. We have fewer class changes. We have no anticipated staffing increases that would occur. So, it keeps it at a cost-neutral perspective, gives us a chance for immediate remediation, and again, provides, provides us with an extra half-credit that we're looking for to make sure we put our, our students on a competitive playing field that's in, in line with that of their peers from other districts around the state. As far as key assets, trying to take a look at what's true about the academic performance of trimester schools. And the schools which I showed you here before are all schools which have scored high on the state report card. So, they've seen situations where they've exceeded expectations, or in some cases, greatly exceeded expectations. So, their performance has, has been proven to be solid over the course of their duration. Granted, in, in many cases, they have been on it very long. So, to determine or discern the impact that the schedule's had on that academic achievement, it's pretty difficult to do. And I'd be the last person to tell you that there's a perfect schedule, because if there was a perfect schedule, everybody already would be doing it. So, this is a situation where we're trying to find what's best for the students here, as opposed to trying to force something that may or may not be in their best interest in terms of academic performance. Took a look at what's true about the additional schedule slot for students, also taking a look at the positive impact on school climate. You know, again, reducing student stress, reducing transitions, longer duration of courses. You know, anytime you can reduce the number of times that students interact throughout the course of the hallway, sometimes those behaviors that kind of, you know, come to play, which doesn't happen very often in our school. And I'll probably say that about our student population in that regard. Still, it, it helps to reduce, you know, some stress that goes along with that. Gives us a chance to embed some guided practice and form of assessment within the lessons. You know, again, a fifty-minute lesson is pretty tight. It's really difficult to get things accomplished in that short period of time. If you're talking about lab courses, if you're talking about tech ed, fi ed, science, and, and the like, difficult to get to into something, working on activity, and all of a sudden, you have to work and start dealing with the cleanup process, and how do you go through and formally assess when you're trying to clean up a lab or clean up the shop prior to the next class coming in? So, this provides it opportunity. And it also gives us a chance to develop more meaningful relationships from a student-teacher perspective, because again, we're with the students for longer periods of time throughout the course of the day. And so, we believe that that's a positive thing. And certainly, some of the other schools where the trimester alluded to is being a positive, positive characteristic. In terms of special considerations, these are some things that have come up. This is not an inclusive list, but obviously, we're concerned about the scheduling of advanced placement courses and making sure students who take those courses have the opportunity and access more of the classes, but also the ability to make sure they're successful on the A P exams, because that's obviously something we are concerned about. The impact of scheduling music classes, and we involve the music department, Mr. Dahlberg and Mr. Mikulak on this to a large extent, to make sure that they've had all the input they can have with regards to this. And also, special considerations scheduling with regards to math and Spanish. And why math and Spanish? Well, because there's concerns about gaps with regards to that trimester schedule, first and third trimester. You know, is there a chance a student could take Spanish one as a freshman during trimester one and two and not see Spanish two again until their sophomore year, trimesters two and three? So, there'd be a year gap. That's a possibility, but it means, means we need to make sure when we're putting the schedule together that we're cognizant of that and try to provide opportunities for kids to make sure that that gap doesn't exist in that, that's large duration, that one-year duration. And also, provide an opportunity to accelerate. So, we need to make sure that when we're building this schedule, that we take that into consideration and look at how we're going to place math and Spanish within the matrix, provide those opportunities, and minimize the impact that that gap might have. And I'll show you some examples of that here as well, as far as what a sample might look like. So, again, we've got, we've got our, our three grading terms, about sixty days each. Half-credit every sixty days, or one-credit one hundred and twenty days, five periods a day of approximately seventy minutes. Students would be enrolled in five classes per term, and teachers would teach for the five periods for the, for each term. And E L T would still be maintained at that thirty-five minutes per day. So, we have that flexible time that, once again, can be used to intervene with students, address students who are in need of additional support, those who need extension, and also provide some much-needed time to address the five courses that they'd be taking at any given time. As far as a bell schedule, to kind of give you a sense as far as what that might look like, same start and end time is what we would recommend or suggest. And this is, again, is a draft, and it's open for conversation and discussion, obviously. But you see what's taking place with regards to the courses, E L T, lunch, and the like. And again, you know, it provides, you know, an extra, extra minute of passing time would be available within that. But otherwise, the impact and the structure of the day stays relatively similar to what we're used to right now. This is the example of a current, our sample schedule for a junior, to kind of give you a sense. One of the things that we talked about was, was the impact of music. And I alluded to the fact that Mr. Dahlberg and Mr. Mikulak and I had some very lengthy conversations about how to approach this. They're very, very adamant about the fact that they want to see the music courses be sustained over the course of the entire year. And, and I tend to agree with that, and that's consistent with what we've seen from mostly the other trimester schools. So, that's where you see band listed in here as being not throughout the course of the entire year. So, students would get one and a half credits, you know, banned within the context of the school year. A P governments of one-credit class, so you can see how that kind of fits in with that. And then, you notice the situation as far as the gap that we alluded to. You've got English eleven. There'd be a gap, at least the way this schedule's set up, just as an example, but a gap with English eleven. Chemistry, and then you have your psychology, Greek, calculus, personal finance. So, that could be, could be what it could look like. It's not to say what, what it will look like, but that's an example of what it could look like, including gaps, including no gaps, just to kind of give you a sense as far as, as far as that goes. In terms of a sample freshman schedule, again, here's another scenario. But this is where I want to show you the ability for us to go through and, and do some acceleration and also talk about what we could do in terms of remediation, because this, this can address both, both of these issues. We could, we could create a situation perhaps where if we knew that we had student interest to want to accelerate, and Spanish is the example I'm using here, where a student could take Spanish one trimesters one and two. And if we knew that they wanted to accelerate, we could start the first half of Spanish two during that last trimester. And that's the reason why it's highlighted in green. So, there's a chance then for a student then to take Spanish two, third trimester, take the second half of it in the fall of their sophomore year, and then jump right into Spanish three trimesters two and three of that year as well. So, there's a chance for us to accelerate through which students are moving through these classes, if that's something they want to do. That could be beneficial for students who transfer in and want to get caught up if they're behind. So, the opportunity to access, in this case, Spanish to get students to Spanish five becomes a real possibility for us here, you know, like Kiwasken High School, if that's something we choose to do. The other benefit that exists is for remediation. And unfortunately, we have this problem that takes place. But let's say, for example, a student were to fail the first half of algebra, okay? Currently, what happens in, in our current seven-period day, if a student fails the first semester of algebra, they pretty much drop out of algebra for the rest of the year, and they repeat algebra again as a sophomore, okay? So, in this situation, if that were to happen, we could have the situation structured in such a way that we could repeat the first half of Algebra one and have a section created during the second trimester. And that way, then they could take the second half of the first half of the course during trimester two, second half during trimester three, and by the time their freshman year's done, they have gotten to a situation where they're back on track. So, we're back on pace, and students are not finding themselves a year behind their peers, and that's important. So, just some implications here, just to kind of wrap things up. And you've got this information, so I'm not going to spend a lot of time going, going through this. But, you know, in terms of frequency of report cards, production reports, that's all available in your packet, and that kind of gives you a sense as far as what that might look like. Minutes of instruction. In terms of instructional minutes, there's a little bit of a difference there, and I'd be happy to talk about that with, if you'd like. But we think that the last, the loss of instructional minutes from, from transition from semester to trimester could be recouped because we have fewer transitions that take place throughout the course of, of the year. So, instead of that start-stop that takes place in a fifty-minute period, some of those things would result in us being able to continue activities, not have that start-stop process where we lose transitional time. Our D P hours, we're not, we're not be really impacted at all. We lose three D P hours for the year because of the additional minute of passing time, because we do suggest an extra minute of passing time with the trimester schedule. But again, we've got a fifty-nine-hour cushion currently with D P I hours of instruction, so we're good as far as that goes. And then, lastly, gap retention analysis, talked about that, analysis between first and second trimester, second and third, first and third. One of the schools in Michigan that's been operating on a trimester for quite some time did an analysis of these particular courses to see what was true about students' grades and this percentage. Takes a look at what's true about students' grades being the same or better from trimester one to trimester two. So, for example, U S history at this particular school, sixty-five percent of students scored the same grade or better in a one-to-two format. Seventy-four percent did better in a two-to-three format. Eighty-one percent actually did better in a one-to-three format. So, where you think that there might be a decrease in terms of performance in this one-to-three situation, in some cases, it, it is, in some cases, it's not. It's really what it kind of goes to show is the, the sequencing of the courses really doesn't have as much to do with student performance as much as it does with quality of instruction we provide to our kids. And of course, that's something that we already know, and so, we continue to focus on that. And with that, I'll be open up to questions if there are any at this point in time.
Can you back it up one slide?
Sure.
So, talk about how, where the, where the testing falls. Talk about where A C T testing and where, where some of the state testing and stuff falls.
Well, the A C T testing, at least the way it's structured right now for the state test is March third and fourth. Which puts us right around the end of the second trimester. Okay, we're very close to that. With regards to Aspire testing, that's going to take place right smack dab in the middle of trimester one. And then the spring version of the test would be shortly after the start of trimester three.
So, do you see any impact based on, and I'm looking at the results of the one-to-three there on some of those. Do you see any impact moving forward with how some of that could fall, chemistry, biology, math, English, those types of things?
Well, because a lot of the testing that we're talking about in terms of A C T, these classes are already well completed by that point in time. And, you know, from the standpoint of, of where its kids are at in terms of their junior year, we've already got the bulk of the classes that they're going to need taken care of. But using biology this year back to the freshman level, the conversations about moving math back here, you know, in the coming, coming years. You know, I think we're setting our students up very well to be successful because they're going to be taking the course that they could need prior to that, prior to that assessment. So, that's really, you know, kind of focused in terms of preparing our students.
From A C T, these impacts sound like that would actually be helpful because they'd be nearing the end of the course for, potentially, for a new class.
And that's the same thing with the A P testing as well. Because, you know, currently, A P classes that last a year long, you're taking the test in May, and you're letting this down and apply some instruction. If the A P, the A P courses are off for trimester one and trimester two, the A P class would be completely finished prior to that assessment. So, there are some benefits associated with that, or currently, our A P's teachers or A P's students don't have access to it.
If that's the case, then I would, I could see a lot of the elective courses falling to their trimester, just out of necessity to try to front-load and keep it back-to-back.
Potentially, it depends upon, depends upon how many A P courses we're talking about. I mean, you know, again, the number of A P courses we have is good for the school our size, but there's other courses within most departments that students take that could be a one-three type of scenario or a two-three scenario. So, we have the ability to place the A Ps one and two, and then build everything else around that.
Right. Can you talk about child failing or falling behind like an algebra you could bring up in the second semester? How, how are you going to staff that? Because you're not going to have algebra one every quarter, are you?
No, but what we could do is we could build, we could build at least one section where we would have students who we plan on taking out for trimester two and trimester three. So, we could have some one-twos and some two-threes, you know, set up. And so, if a student is unsuccessful in the first half in that trimester, trimester one, there are going to be a class available for them that's already staffed and already planning on running with, you know, a finite group of kids. You know, we're not planning on kids failing, obviously.
Right, I get it.
But we could, we could structure where we have some slots in there, so in case our students are unsuccessful, we can get them in right away.
Can you back up to the slide of the scheduling, trimester scheduling, please?
Yeah, which, which one?
Uh, the one where the period, they've got it broken down in three, seventy minutes daily, yep, right there.
Yep.
So, right there on each, on the fall, you're looking at five credits?
Two and a half credits. Yeah. Third week's class, this should be half a credit.
Correct. So, that's the first semester would be five and a half, or no?
Two and a half.
Two and a half, two and a half. So, what are we looking at for a total year for, for graduation? How many credits do we?
Your E L R is thirty. Your E L R is thirty, right now you're currently twenty-eight.
But we really only require?
Twenty-five is for this year's group, twenty-four.
Is that going to change now? Is that going to change now?
We're not recommending that at this point in time, no.
Is this going to be a scheduling nightmare for?
Uh, to address that particular issue, no, it's not going to be. And the reason why it's not going to be is because we're working hand-in-hand with Skyward. This year, in fact, starting on Friday, regardless of the schedule that we do, I mean, we're moving forward, but we have to schedule something next year, right? But we're working with Skyward hand-in-hand, starting this coming week, to make sure that the schedule that we're able to, you know, is one that we can build, and they can help us, you know, problem solve and publish your issues on the front of the things, so.
So just so the board knows that this is not something we're asking you to vote on tonight.
Correct.
Um, this is information, and that we have now thirty days to petition, ask, send questions, thoughts. This will be back on the agenda under old business in December. And at that time, if the board would feel comfortable enough with the information that you've gleaned over the next thirty days, you could potentially make a motion at that time.
Can we do the same thing with, with some of the comment court questions with Mark? Is that we gather those questions and answers and send out to the board?
Correct.
Great. We do it if that's going to be. One other thing I was looking at is, because Phil was talking about this, was we did have the transition from four to seven, which occurred to a freshman class that was becoming a sophomore class. Those students who were in the block in their freshman year, seven period sophomore, junior, are now seniors.
Right.
So at least there won't be a double switch on anybody that was in my view.
That's what I was getting at too, it's like, if we're going to do this, let's keep this for a while. Because I think we're not going to be talking about stress. I mean, we keep changing our.
If you want to hear people squat, change.
Well, that's what I'm getting at, that's where you get most of the stress.
Even if it's better.
Yeah, and they don't know it's better, but they're still, you know, yeah.
We've, we've, we've talked about a lot of these things, and I think it's a profound statement that Bill made that this is a request coming directly from the teachers. This is not by any shape, form, or fashion something that was generated by your administration. We are listening to them, we understand where they're coming from, and we feel that it is worthy of discussion and/or changing. And Bill has done a good job of, of getting the thoughts put together and presenting it. And I just would say that this is something for your information only. So we would ask that you, if you have any questions between now and December eighth, that you send them to us, and we will have them fully answered. And keep in mind that this is a request made by the teachers.
And just to give you a sense, we, we surveyed the staff on this after lengthy discussion. We surveyed them at that time, and there was eighty-five percent support for it. We went back and talked about the, the work that was going to be required of them to make this happen, and it's a substantial amount of work on their end, and we've learned once again that it's eighty-eight percent support. So we've got eighty-eight percent of our staff do it.
With the new schedule, you'll be able to accumulate thirty credits. We'll only need twenty-five to graduate. And the only reason I ask that is if you do have a student that is, I mean, you have to try to get a window of opportunity in there to, to get him to graduate, to work with them. You think that, I'm just asking, that's enough? Would be a five-credit leeway, more or less what you're telling me?
Five for this year's class, but next year it goes to twenty-four credits for graduation, so it's six credits.
Okay, so there'd be a bigger window of opportunity.
Most definitely. And lots of different opportunities, I mean, opportunities through.
Right, I, I get this, too, and I'm getting that, though, is, you know, we, we have to, if I don't have an opportunity to pick up that first algebra class, we, we have to do something with that.
Well, even at twenty-five, according to the way it's two and a half per trimester, they have twelve trimesters. If they blow up two of them, they still graduate. Just to put it in perspective.
Well, I'm just saying that if I'm struggling in a class and I can't get through it, and I got to take that class over to something else, if there's enough opportunity there to get that required credit, oh.
Oh, I, I, I know what you're saying, and what I'm saying is.
Right, I see what you're saying, you can, you could bowl two of twelve.
Right, exactly. And still get the gap in the gallon and the whole.
Right, but you could blow two of twelve that you don't need, what if it's defense?
But this is the opportunity to be able to get this and to be able to move forward instead of just like saying, oh, forget it.
That's what I'm getting at, there's still enough opportunity in this to, to get caught up, more or less.
And this doesn't address some of this, so it's always.
And we're not going to probably reinvent the wheel on this, so we'll take a look at what those other schools are doing and see how many credits they have for graduation, and probably just cut and paste whatever it is that they're doing. Just being honest, I mean, other people have done this and have gone before us, so we might as well use what they found out. So whether it's twenty-four, twenty-five, or twenty-six, we'll probably fall in line with what other school districts are doing.
And when you're taking several AP courses, that's really tough. You know, for seven courses during the day, and you have a few, you know, like three AP courses, there's a ton of work with that, so.
Well, and, and along those lines, the forty-five-hundred to forty-two-hundred teaching minutes, that, that difference, the six-point-seven percent, that's three minutes out of a forty-seven-minute class period. I gotta think we lose three minutes between the front end and the back end. So I see what you mean, was you don't need as much because you've got the consistent run of time, so.
So is that concerned with the, the retention period? So if I have to class in trimester three and then it's gap out in trimester, and then, you know, you're having less education time with the students because you have to summarize or build off of what you did in the previous trimester?
I think that's what's interesting about that gap analysis, is the fact that there really doesn't, there's no discernible evidence that suggests that there's a negative impact on a gap that would exist between, let's say, first trimester and third trimester.
That was one, is that one sample in the school?
Yeah, that's one sample, it's, it's a sample of a school that had data on it, you know, that I could actually access. The data really, I mean, the only school I could pull data from from Wisconsin would be the period. It would be, you know, all valid. Nobody else is just, anytime you do a transition, you're going to see, you know, recommendation dip right away before things really start to figure off. So the period would be at school if we should figure it out, as we go with student.
And that's similar size to us, so it should be good.
Well, you talked about the stress levels for students in seventh-period day in the crazy track-like situation. I'm assuming with our teachers too, we have the same type of stress levels for them trying to prepare for so many classes. So talk about how this impacts the teachers from the long-term perspective. I realize that the workload up front here for some of the staff members may be heavier to make the adjustments. But beyond that, once things are settled and in place, does it help our staff?
I believe that it does. You know, I, I can let, I can let Mr. Hendricks, Mr. Crass to speak to it. Mrs. Owens is here, Mrs. Aloff is here, and if you want to speak.
Bill, we, we have the audit report, and so we're going to keep it a moment, just here. I'm just saying that, that if we can do that the next time and put that on the agenda, so.
Yes, I do.
To have other people speak.
But from the standpoint that it's going to put them in a situation where the responsible computer school at any given time, that obviously is going to have, make them more accessible to students that they do have.
Okay, great, nice work, Bill.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, superintendent's report, Mr. Spazl.
Just a couple of things real quickly. The convention, I don't know where they came with this every child, every day, is, the ninety-fourth state convention is coming up in January. I put it in your packet, Ray, he made copies of all the different sessions. You can see there's a lot of good stuff there. Between now and the December board meeting, if you would check your calendars to see if there's one or two, or all three days that you can go, that would be great, and we can talk more about that next time. And then the other thing is, is that traditionally, before the December, the fourth Tuesday of, of, excuse me, the fourth Tuesday of November is the final day to post the notice of school board election. So we gave you a copy of what it would look like as of today for the notice of board election. That needs to be posted by the fourth Tuesday of the month, which is, which is Tuesday, November twenty, this year.
Next, Ms. Thorson.
Good evening. And your business managers, business office packet, you've got financial report, your financial report, the legal costs. And then this month, we've given you the calendar for the budget two thousand fifteen sixteen. You know, just two weeks ago, you approved a budget for fourteen fifteen. We have to start all over again. This, uh, this, uh, budget task broken down by month. We've been using something official in April with that working budget, but we never ended our, we're keeping pieces every month. We called it a budget estimate template, and we saw, as soon as we knew something, we knew something, how it affected the budget. And then, right now, there's not a lot of dates filled in, but as those dates become available, we'll share those. So what you really want to hear is Kerry then from Riley, Penner, and Benton give you a brief and very interesting overview of the audit. I hope that you all have had a chance to look through the, um, third parts that were sent over to you a while back. I will summarize those for you quickly. The first page, which is our audit report, some unmodified, unmodified community sheets, so that's important. That's the type of note you're looking for, so we're seeing that the current statements are very presented. Um, there's a couple of changes that I'll note right away. We had two prior period adjustments that were made, since we adjusted where we started at, so it changed a pretty big way last year, but we did not know about. And the first one is due to a change in the capitalization policy. Increased to five thousand dollars, a level of capitalized equipment act. Because this, we had to write off any items that were under that amount, and so that amounted to six hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars. And then there was another prior period adjustment in the amount of eighty-one thousand six hundred. This is for some party fixed asset additions and disposals that were not included on the SDR's appraisal report, so we had to adjust them this year when they, they showed up on the screening of the appraisal. Your financial results for the year, oh, I should note, those only affect the first two statements of the government, why they don't affect your fund statements at all, so it's not going to affect your, um, your fund ten. Operating results, the general fund for the year had an increased mixed fund balance of three hundred and eighty-eight thousand nine hundred dollars. End of year fund balances, amount spent for fund balancing, you've got a fund of two hundred and sixteen thousand, this is equal to your amount of the paid expenses. And then you have an outstanding fund balance of three million two hundred and eighteen thousand. And we have comparison to your budget. For fund ten, you expended ninety percent of the budgeted expenditures, and you received one hundred percent of your budgeted revenues. For fund twenty-seven, you expended ninety-two percent of your budgeted expenditures and received eighty-two percent of your budgeted revenues. There's detail on the report on page thirty, it shows which individual functions were overbudgeted, if you wanted to see where those are fell. Your jet activity for the year, you made payments on your general obligation bonds of eight hundred and forty-five thousand, so you closed the year with a balance of four million seven hundred and forty-five thousand on the general obligation bonds. Made payments on your promissory note of two hundred and ninety thousand, so you ended the year with a balance on those of two million and fifty-five thousand. And then we also have to show your OPEB liability. Based on the payment that, or the calculation that GAZI has as due, the amount that's reported on your financial statements at the end of the year is a prepayment of three hundred and one thousand. What this means is that you've paid more over the years than what the actuary has determined your required annual contribution is. But what the full liability that they've determined to be is three million five hundred and fifteen dollars. So even though you're showing a prepayment, there really is a liability out there. It's showing the prepayment because of how the required.
So we're just, we're just ahead of, we're ahead of schedule.
You're ahead of, like, the annual payment balance. And then the last couple pages of the report is the single audit reporting, so the grant testing that we have to do. We had one fine this year, and that was for the transportation program. We found that the district was including some students in the zero-to-two-mile category that were not within the hazardous transportation plan area, and so we're required to report that. If the student lives within zero to two miles, in order to be listed on transportation, you get eight for them. You have to, they have to live within that plan. So you want to look into that for next year, making sure when you're putting that category is within that area, mobile plan. We also issued a letter, but do you have any questions on the kind of assistance before going through that?
You talked about the changes in our capitalization process, et cetera. And then you also said they bucked the, the equip, so there were, because we are, effectively, we accelerated the depreciation on the items that were under five thousand dollars, that, so that doesn't change our fund balance?
It, it'll change, if, if you look on date fourteen fifteen, it'll change that where you combine the whole district together. But it doesn't change your fund balance for your individual funds. So the general fund doesn't change, your special vacation fund, which is, um, it's just, uh, the confusing district-wide statements that we had to add in, uh, even years ago, that GAZI required. Where those other statements that are on full approval, we showed the capital assets, where we showed.
Okay, okay, okay. I'm hearing, you know, a change in our equity from what you said.
Right, right, yeah, not in your.
How's that not affect our fund balance?
Right, it's only on the full approval statements that we have to show.
Oh, that, this is a particular cash basis, okay. And then I guess, now, on the equipment, there was the equipment that was disposed of that you were not made aware that it was disposed, if I understood correctly.
Right, you get, um, an appraisal each year to show what, the additions or what's disposed, to make up the depreciation for us. Occasionally, there's things during the year that they don't get on that report, either they're not aware of it at the time, or they miss it, and so it shows up on the next report as a post-adjustment. So there are some items in that report this year that were posted up.
So there's new assets that you weren't aware of? So I have, is anybody else on the side? I didn't think so.
Okay, we also issued a letter to you, so I'll go through that quick. On the first page of it, we have to list any internal control related, which should be fine. We list out the different kinds of inferior weaknesses, if they're more severe, and then significant deficiencies, which we still have to make aware if they're less severe. We note that we do not have any, any internal control deficiencies that we found in the year, so that's a big part of the section under those. And then we also have some other matters every year that we put in the letter to make you aware. First one is when we're probably used to segregation duties. We note that the accounting reporting is a room to number of individuals. Technically, the more you can split up these duties, the better. With a smaller entity, you often can't do that, it's not possible to have enough people to split the duties as much as you should. So you want to make sure that the duties of authorization, record-keeping, and custody are split as much as possible. At the time of the audit, the person who's prepared the checks was also reconciling the bank statement, so splitting these two duties would greatly increase that, because we'd be splitting two of those functions.
Phil, we talked about that before.
We've had the segregation duties in there, I don't know if we specifically said the bank statement, but that's one thing that would really help separate it out.
But why don't you don't, because you don't have enough people to handle it directly?
We have the bookkeeper.
We'd like to pause a little longer.
On the next page, we have a couple of items noted. On the first being, for student activity accounts, we suggested you review what's going into the fund safety and determine if they're properly recorded, we've got some strict guidelines of what they, they shouldn't, shouldn't be in there. So here we suggest to go through that list and see if there's anything that would really be more accurately classified among the other funds. We note the need for conflict of interest policy. There is actually a state statute that prohibits the district from engaging in contracts over thirteen thousand dollars with any organization which an officer or employee has a private interest. In order to ensure compliance, we recommend you got the formal policy covering conflict of interest situations. You want to identify any business relationships where you could have a possible issue. A lot of times, people have board members or key employees sign off on, on the statements saying there are no, no transactions which are impacting the person, it's just sort of covered for this, this statute. We have another comment for documentation of receipts. There were a number of instances in which funds collected at the various schools were forwarded to the district office for deposit, but the supporting documentation was not included. Supporting documentation should be forwarded with the funds for deposit and the district office. Employees should verify that the funds, that the funds for deposit agree to the supporting documentation. Whilst for more accurate tracking, have all of them come in cash and checks to strengthen internal controls of those receipts. And we also note, just because we'd like to remind you, that we have a new actuarial report. The next one, we need to be as direct as twenty fifteen to be able to see the funds. The rest of this series is the standard items that we're required to make the board aware of, so I will take you those quickly. For change in the current practices, as I know you adopted a new capitalization policy, which is implemented, so it's going to change over the year. Also, some estimates, is the estimate of the fixed asset valuation, which is based on a third-credit appraisal, and the estimate of the OPEB liability, which comes from an, an actuarial appraisal. No difficulties in performing the audit, no uncorrected misstatements, no disagreements with management. No difficulties in performing the audit, no uncorrected misstatements, no disagreements with management, and no other findings to make you aware. I feel like I do have an update from last year's management letter, if you want to know anything that might have changed from there.
Yeah.
Okay, some things I had on my last two, was that we noted that student activity counts, interest earned, and made service charges were not being allocated between the various student activity funds. This year, those are being allocated. Community service fund. Last year, we noted that there is an allocation of expenditures into the community service fund, but there is not backup available for how that allocation was, was created. This year, the district has methods of allocating expenditures to the funds, and the supporting documentation was available for us. And then we also suggested that you adopt a formal capitalization policy last year, and we decided to policy $5,000.
One question? Great, thank you very much. We're all smarter now.
Thanks, Karen.
Thank you.
Look at this, Jan missed notes. This is Chapman. Make some services report.
You should have all made your packet. It happened on the document of, like, 2013-15, as our enrollment stands right now for special education. So I just presented that. If there's any questions you have, I'm sure you all went up. I'll leave it up a little bit, and I'm going to go to the next.
Any questions?
Thank you.
And now, Joel, excuse, just a snore.
All right, just want to give you guys an update on charter school stuff. On October 28th, we had an off-site training as a staff, met off-site. Just because we wanted to get away from the school. We had one day of PD, and we were there for half a day and just to interruption. So we worked to get something off-site, and we actually ended up going to the conference taking. They let us use their boardroom, and we had a really nice meeting there, it was nice, comfortable. And we got a lot accomplished. We had a video conference with the folks from Wildman's Charter School, who've been working with us. They're our mentors through the Innovative Schools Network. Through those guys, Paul and Lisa, the two people we're working with, they have just sent the survey to our staff. So we're surveying our staff, myself included, and just kind of figure out where we're at with charter school stuff and try and do some strategic planning. So we're going to continue working through that. We had a multi-age, because this year, we had the whole multi-age learning stuff going on at Wayne Elementary School. We did a survey of the parents and community to see how their thoughts were on how multi-age was going this year. And then we also, that second half of that survey as well, charter school stuff. The feedback on multi-age was very positive, we thought, very good. Charter school information, basically, they're looking for more information, which is what we expected. So now we have some baseline data, and we know where we need to be working and sharing information. And we just had a website for I4Learning, is now, you can get to it through the Wayne Elementary School website. For the literacy project, Wayne Elementary School, you know, we're still part of the district, we're doing a literacy project, and that's going very good. We have somebody, Kim Brown, working with us as our consultant, and she's been coming in, and she has multi-age experience. So she's bringing some of that with the literacy project also. And she also has worked with some charter schools, so that's been very helpful. Coming up, a couple of things coming up, we have the Google Summit, a couple of staff are going to through Google, it's in the mail. There's going to be some great stuff going on there. We have a three, five cohort going, those teachers, because all the students in there have been working on the Chromebooks, and they're really good with Google apps. We had the tour today with some of the old alumni from original Wayne back in 1964, that they came through. And they saw the kids and the stuff they could do on the computer, and they were just kind of blown away. They could do. Some of them were asking the kids if they knew what a rotary phone was. They said no, too. Couple of other things, we have two site visits coming up. We're going to the Discovery Charter School in Columbus. They've been around for a while, we're going to go see what they're doing. They're more of a green school, so they're doing environmental stuff, but they do it multi-age and project-based. Another one is Quest Elementary School in Griffin, and they received a grant from DPI, so our visit to them, everything's paid for. They have some professional development over the summer that we can go to, and that's all covered through their grant. So that'll be nice. One other, just kind of paperwork-type stuff, non-stock corporation status. We have to have that filed by December 1st. I was just on the phone last week. I should be getting that paper back this week, so we can get that signed and sent off, and we'll be good there. And then the other part of my update is just about the governance board. We've been doing a lot of work trying to recruit really solid people with different skill sets. And all the things that we've been to, and we've talked to many people about charter school governance, it's really important they have these different skill sets. You don't just want, you know, parents, community members, you want to make sure you have people who cover the different skills. So you can see the handout that Mr. Schwan has handed out for me. All right, we're going to have an I4Learning teacher, it's going to be Angie Peterson, she's going to be our teacher leader, she'll be on the board. We're going to have a middle school teacher. We thought it'd be a good idea to have, because one of the first questions you hear from a lot of parents when you start talking about charter school, well, what happens after fifth grade? So we thought it'd be a really good idea to have a middle school teacher on there. We have a homeschool parent that's been involved with the innovation planning all along, and that's Jackie Alice. We have a higher education partner, that's Kristen Fennell. So she's through Marine Technical College, and she's the dean of one of their areas. I don't remember which one it is, but she's got some, a really strong background. She's actually came to one of our planning committees and met, so those people. Another one for the legal skill set, Deb Strigons, I'm sure you guys are all aware of, longtime community member, she's in the district. But being a lawyer, she'll have that legal skill set. Financial skill set, we have Craig Plazek, who's the vice president of commercial lending. He's going to be coming and joining us, although he has that strong financial background. We have a PR and marketing person, that's going to be Marsha Thois. She's going to be a nice connection between the schools and businesses, because she's worked with the Second Chance Program. And then we have another one, business partner, is going to be Jason, I bet you, Jason Staffin. He is an IT business person, so I think having all the technology background myself would be a very, would be a good strength there. And then we have one other, one other position, that's going to be somebody who has a child attending the school next year and for a few years to come. And we've been talking with Heather, about Heather being involved with that. So I guess, we're very excited to have Heather on board. She's got a lot of good experience with the board already, so we're looking at her like ever as board for the charter school going forward.
Yeah, and for some, for everybody to kind of understand, I wish I could wear both hats, but I can't. So ultimately, I have to submit a letter of resignation from the board. I feel like, like, the charter school is absolutely going the right direction for our whole district, not just for Wayne.
We're very excited to have Heather. She's just experienced it, she had, we know she's very committed, passionate about education. Again, like she just said, not just for Wayne or I4, just charter schools, but for the whole district, and how we can continue making this a great thing for our whole district.
Yeah, I just, people, before you sit in a seat like this, you don't realize how many areas of conflicts of interest can be out there. And for me, I run into several. And so this is one where I really truly feel as if our middle school can benefit from strategies that are being developed at this charter school. And I feel like long-term, it's the best thing for our district. I, I think there are some really great opportunities for students all across the board. So thanks for the opportunity, but unfortunately, it will be stepping down.
Any other questions? So I'd love to have more again next month.
It's good for, it's good for Wayne, and it's good for the entire district to have this option. One, one second, in regards to the, the timing, Heather. Were aware of the second, fourth Tuesday resignation date and how that affects the upcoming election and et cetera? One thing that we're going to have to think about, as is the entire group, is what's best for the board going forward from a timing standpoint here? As far as the person who would be potentially stepping in. If I understand math right, I think they'd be stepping in, and within 30 days, they're going to have to make a decision on whether they're going to run for the position or not for the final year. And then have to make a decision a year later, are they going to continue on from that standpoint? It's my personal opinion that that's going to be kind of a disjointed situation. So I guess, what we're like, the board's input on what the rest of the board thinks about the timing of that. Do we have someone come on, and then really, hopefully, they're the ones that won't step in and continue? Or do we, do we have, I mean, Craig's been on board, we have almost a year for the election time. We have a little, we have a little more than that with the person who put in, put on the board. I think it's good to have seven, I think, I don't think he was necessarily want seven. So then I think, I'd like some input from the board on their feelings on that and your input on that as well.
Just to back up a little bit, so that everybody's on the same page with what, what you're talking about. So my understanding is that November 25th, which is the last Tuesday of the month, it's the 25th of August, is kind of significant. Because if I resign, my, my last effective board day is before that. It means that in April of 2015, the voters would get to choose who fills my seat for the remainder of my seat. If I were to put an effective date in my resignation letter after November 25th, it means that you will appoint somebody to fill my seat until April 2016, which would fill out the rest of my term, you know, before we go back to the public to be chosen. I guess my personal feeling is, the faster that they get to choose who fills the seat, I feel the better. I certainly understand that from a board perspective, it can be a little disjointed and, and things like that, too.
A lot disjointed.
But at the same time, Gary, the board could make the decision to run as a six-member board until, as well. Those are decisions that could be made, but I feel like the constituents put me here, and I feel like the constituents should put the next person to it.
Well, and that, that's very important, but the concern is that, is it fair to somebody who's willing, or people that are willing to come before the board to make a choice, and then in a month decide they have to run for an election when they're just getting their feet wet to really know what the operation of the board is?
And I wish that Craig was here to speak to this, but I, I feel like it would be a great, a great glimpse of what could be to come for that person if they chose to run. I don't see that as being negative for that individual.
I do, because they get one week, they're going to give up for an hour and a half, you know, to try to get their arms around. So if that's where, I, I would have to agree to disagree with you on that part of it.
So you're looking to move it half of it?
Yeah, because then we get some, some cohesiveness going in there. Because that'd be a good one.
Correct.
Which would be a leader, which would be.
I think of when I began, and I was trying to be done at the same time, but I felt it took like six to 12 months just to even get, you know, to understand what all goes into being on the board and how things affect, you know, you know, you have, coming to the meeting, you're thinking, this is the right thing to do. And then you hear all the perspective, and, and now that I've been on the board for several years, and, and listening to people speak, it's now I get it. You know, but like I said, it took about six or 12 months. I do feel that, you know, if somebody's appointed and they sit here on a meeting, they're, I mean, they hardly know what's going to go on. And maybe it is in all fairness to let them roll out until 2016, and then make that determination to run a campaign potentially.
Yeah, I would, I would agree with that timing, I would feel the same. I think, I, I talked to you, Jay, about, about six weeks ago, and I think "get it" was the term that you used at that time. So I think that's the point. So I guess, any other input on the timing issue? Positive, negative? I guess with that, Heather, I'll volley it back to you to get back to us, I guess, obviously, with the timing. So we know what we're going to have to do. So I would appreciate you considering the thought process of the board as a whole, and try to figure out what's, what's the best direction for our whole district.
Whole district, right?
How soon could we be looking at that? In December yet, or by January?
I, I would want it, because again, to get people up to speed, I'd say the sooner the better, because we got a board retreat on January 5th.
Well, that's what I'm saying, is you'd have to retreat coming on January.
And that's going to be significant, that's going to be some big decision-making stuff.
Heather and Troy and I met last one day, and the timeline that we kind of hatched out at that time would be to probably put it in the paper for a couple of weeks, and then give somebody an opportunity to respond to that. So you'd probably be looking at the end of the month, and to try to see if anybody actually applies to get on the board. And then, like we did in the last time, when this happened a few months ago, we would do the interviewing right before the board meeting on the, on the 8th, and then appoint the person on the 8th of December.
Ken?
It seemed to work out pretty well with, with Craig doing it that way. So that was kind of the, using what we've done in the past.
Well, regardless, depending on when she's going to resign, she's going to resign, so we can.
That's what we're going to do, no matter what.
Right, that's what I'm saying, we could put it in. It's just a matter of what the schedule is.
I, I think I heard the board say they don't want to run with six.
No.
We want, we want seven. So we're going to have seven come December 8th, no matter when the, that it comes in, so. That, that's the timeline, unless I hear differently from the board.
Right, we're going to have seven, it's just a matter of what their term is going to be, depending on what happens.
Correct. It'll either be four months or 16 months.
Ken?
All right, I have a quick update, kind of just a big picture, the 30,000-foot view, as Mr. Schwan likes to call it, for what the technology department has been doing. It's Tammy, Ruth, myself, and then we have the service president, Derek Meyer, who helps us out as, as part of his schedule of the day. Between the three of us, for quarter one, we have closed 884 health vest tickets. And the numbers next to the buildings are more than quotes, not the number of tickets each one had. Look at the pie chart. I know, I was like, ooh, that's not going to help out. But yeah, look at the size of the pie, that's a better picture for you. And invite your friend in color, because that helps. I was saving some. And then currently, we have 65 health vest tickets open. Some of them are, through working with K-12, that they're, they're bigger issues or beefier issues. We're starting to really dig into some of the, the meat, not the quick fix, so we'll trip right over there and hit some buttons and wave our hands, and it happens. So we're really digging in, but every day, we're making progress, and that is very exciting. The other part, just a, just general status update. The KHS 408 N Computing Lab was older technology than all the elementary schools. N computing is kind of like a virtual computing, so if you go into any elementary school, their computer lab, KES specifically has the pods. There's no bottom to their computers. It's just a monitor, a keyboard, and a mouse, and there's a little attachment on the back. That technology, K-12 and I are working very hard to keep, and so far, it's okay, there's a hiccup here or there, but it's sustainable. The technology that was used and installed a few years prior to that was outdated, and we could not support it in the 408 lab. So we worked together with Mrs. Drayer and Mr. Loss, shut it down for a month while we were gathering teacher workstations that used, they now have laptops, and repurposing those, so now the 408 lab is reopened, all with individual computers. We've had a couple of glitches here and there, we fixed them, and right now, it is back up and running at no cost other than a staff laptop. So that was really exciting for us to be able to turn around. We've been focusing a lot on inventory and organization and making sure we know what we have, hardware, software, where is it, how can we best support it, and things like that. We have started long-range planning with the K-12 Technology Group, looking out through the rest of the school year, as well as beyond. How can we best serve the students and staff of the school district? I also have a K-5 and a 612 Technology Group that is currently serviced by administrators. Andy Mayer, the librarian, serves on both. And then at least one, if not more, representative from each building for K-5 as well as 612. And we focus, we try to be good stewards of time, which is why they're currently separate. But as necessary, we will meet K-12 to discuss bigger decisions. And at that point, when we're ready to do some big decision-making, we'll probably be contacting some of you guys for some input and things like that. But those are set. They did a great job planning August PD, we did a day. But those are set, they did a great job planning August PD, we did a day, and then six twelve did a half, and then an additional half day of nothing but very conference-style professional development, so teachers could really kind of choose what they wanted to learn about. And that was a huge undertaking and I think it went pretty darn good for our first time attempting some kind of customized professional development for our staff. So now we're regrouping and looking forward, and we're also working with classroom teachers on technology integration, whether it's their websites or using different scripts in Google Drive to make their lives a little bit easier, make the formative assessments come and flow a little bit faster. So that is currently what I'm working on as far as classroom. Looking forward, it will be more Tiffany in the classroom, more Garrett and Tammy doing the, the fix-it maintaining stuff. That's our current update.
Any questions? So it's, it's going well, if it's kind of like a good referee, we're not hearing anything, so.
Sounds familiar. We'll take it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mary, policy report.
Okay, we last met on October twenty-seventh, we have completed all Neola policies. And I, oh shoot, no, I forgot to bring them at home. The last, there were just a few items that I ran off copies like I had before for everybody to make the changes in your booklets. There were just a few real minor things. Completed them all, I met with Jim so that the next process is that Richard's coming from Neola on the eighteenth to meet with you and Tracy to kind of put it in and correct it. So minor kinds of things, it really was good. So we went through everything with mine.
Great, that was a lot of time, I appreciate everyone's effort.
Oh, it was great.
In that.
It really was good.
We're in a good spot with the policies.
Right. So I would get those to you, there was just a few items like I did before with some, you know, extra words or a spelling word or, you know, some minor kinds of things.
Excellent, thank you very much. Financial part, Jay, we're all good?
Good.
So everybody's got a copy of the focus for building grounds? So if you've got any questions, we're going to meet on December eighth at five, we're going to have like an hour meeting, five, six, correct? At the district office, so have, either give them the Doug, give them me, or give them Jim, questions that you have about the plan, I know Mary's dug into it already, so if you've got questions? Yeah, that's it. Okay, looking for a motion to go into closed session?
I'm moved to enter the closed session, seconds.
Okay, we will go into closed session in three minutes, giving everyone a chance to disperse.